Is it two minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
That's practically correct.
The clock is at five twenty now.
Did you forget your password?
Sidney.
Yeah.
John O'Callaghan.
John O'Callaghan.
No. Everyone's different. And then Sidney, that'd be really good. We loaded up. I forgot. That he can look in my map.
There you are. Good to see you.
It's still going up, but like.
I did. I did. I made my password. Nice.
I said it wouldn't work, but I didn't.
No, it doesn't. I don't know. You're not in the office because I.
In the office all day.
Okay, it's five thirty. Let's call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of Bellevista City Council Work Session for June seventeen, twenty twenty-four. First item is review of minutes. Be sure, everyone on council, be sure and check those over and let me know if you have any changes. We're gonna go a little bit out of order tonight. The first thing is item D, accepting the financial audit report presented by Forbes Basers LLP, our auditors, for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And also as a discussion item, we had representatives from the auditing firm. So this is David Coleman and Katie Flores.
Excellent. Well, is this a good spot for us to be in?
Yeah.
Thank you all for allowing us to be here. I am David Coleman. I am a partner on your engagement. This is Katie Flores. She is the manager one out here doing the work every day. We are pleased to be here to share the results of the two thousand twenty-three audit. When you note that this is a full four months ahead of where the audit got issued last year. We just slipped them in our columns when we presented in October last year. So when we were started the audit this year, Kim challenged us to get it out, you know, the first of May, around May or something like. The end of May or something like that. But anyway, we put our heads down with the help of Kim and her staff. We were able to get that done. So without, Katie's gonna take you through a few slides and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Katie, I'm gonna contradict myself. Maybe it'd be better if you read this in so that way be on camera, you'd be facing the people. Thank you.
Okay, I'll do my best to speak loudly. So going through the presentation, the objectives of our audit. We issue four opinions for the city. One on your financial statements. One, because you receive federal awards and federal funding, we issue an opinion on compliance with those federal awards as well as your internal control of our financial reporting. We also issue an opinion on your compliance with certain state acts. So looking at management versus auditors responsibility. So an audit does not relieve management of their normal duties and responsibilities. So management is responsible for the financial statements and the auditors are responsible for expressing an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit work. So getting into the audit results. For your opinion on the financial statements, we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements being in prepared accordance with regulatory basis of accounting. So the city keeps our books on regulatory basis of accounting. We do a regulatory basis audit. This is something that the state of Arkansas allows. Because of that, we do issue an adverse opinion on your financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Regulatory basis is not GAAP. You could potentially have a GAAP audit in the future, but for now, it's not really necessary. Regulatory basis is perfectly fine in accordance with state law. Your opinion on the compliance with certain state acts was unmodified as well. And your opinion on your internal control of our financial reporting. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies and no noncompliance. Your report on compliance for, you had one major federal program that I will touch on later in the presentation. This is your federal award, so we noted no noncompliance with that as well. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies and also an unmodified opinion on that as well. To hit on just a couple of highlights on the general fund. You had an ending unassigned fund balance for the general fund of fifteen point nine million, which represents approximately seventy-eight percent of general fund budgeted operating expenditures for twenty-four. So that's a very healthy unassigned general fund balance. We generally expect that percent to be above seventy, seventy-five percent. So excellent, healthy general fund balance there. I did include your general fund budget to actual. I apologize, it's a little bit fuzzy. But just to hit on a couple of items. Your federal awards, you received a little bit less than budgeted. That was due to timing. You all were pending a Mercy Way reimbursement from RDOT at year end. Sales taxes. So it's a great year for the city. Things are booming in Bellevista. So your sales tax where you receive more than you budgeted. And then capital outlay expenditures, so your construction-related capital expenditures were a little less than budgeted. That was also due to some timing. And I believe some capital projects were budgeted that didn't go through this year. You know, planning to do those at a later time. You had one major federal award program that we audited this year. We also audited it last year. It was the Highway Planning and Construction Program. So this is provided through RDOT. This is the funding used for the Mercy Way and Blowing Springs construction work. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted and also no noncompliance over that audit of that program. So before I open it up for questions, again, as David mentioned, it was a very successful year, successful audit. You all were the first city in Arkansas to issue and register with the state with a population of over four thousand. You're also the third city overall in Arkansas to issue and register with the state. So also four months ahead of when we issued last year. So kudos to Kim and the city for very timely completion of the audit. With that, do you all have any questions for David or I?
I have one question. You were talking about our balance of fifteen point nine million being seventy-eight percent of, I guess, of annual revenues.
That's your budgeted general fund expenditures for next year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And you said, I thought that was a pretty high balance. You said, you usually like to see seventy percent or more.
She misspoke when we said that. Usually it's twenty percent is ideal, twenty to twenty-five percent.
Oh, okay.
On that. So it's well above what is considered very healthy fund balance for the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I understand it's fifteen million is seventy-eight percent of our projected expenses.
So we, how you can sometimes gauge the health of your fund balance and your general fund is you look at, at any point in time, you look at the general fund expenditures. So if you budgeted a hundred million dollars and you have seventy million, that would be seventy percent of those budgeted expenditures. It represents a healthy reserve in your general fund.
So are you talking operating expenditures when you do that?
Yeah, in capital. Unassigned, you can do whatever you want to with the money as a governing board. It's not restricted.
What is your projected revenue for next year?
You know, when Peter said, back when Peter was mayor, we set up kind of a financial deal of how much of a balance we'd like. And I think he said compared to the revenues. I think he said twenty-five percent, which actually is, would be three months if you think about it. So Kim, did you wanna weigh in on that?
I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear what we were talking about. So I step, I went and stepped up. But our, our policy is twenty-five percent of revenue. That's what our policy says. And that's what we take as a reserve. Now, the, a lot of other cities use expenditures of the next year, and that's the number I'm most used to. But there are a number of cities in Arkansas, for whatever reason, that use revenues, right? So we have, one of the reasons why this is really great for us is we have a big, a big, as you guys know, we have budgeted a lot of that already for capital expenditures.
Yeah, just because it's unrestricted doesn't mean that you don't have plans for it. Just means you have the money to make to spend it.
Yeah.
And we just carve right out of that. We carve our reserve. So that is, that is before we take our twenty-five percent of the twenty-four revenue. So this means, by the way, for this year, we're gonna be able to have all of this information available when we do our budget. Last year, we were in the midst of doing the budget and the capital expenditures and didn't have an audit done, right? So this will help us from that standpoint. That was my main, my main goal of getting it done is because we hit budget season in August.
What about my equation? What is our?
real quick, if you want me to go to the website. Four.
No, just now numbers, fine.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-three million.
I'm sure it's here someplace.
I do remember when Kim first came, she said, I'm gonna have an audit with no negative comments on it. Several people made faces and she did it. She has an audit with no negatives.
And four months early.
Well, the exception to the, to the G A A S accounting standards is still there.
Well.
That's because we follow the state of Arkansas.
We do. And. And let me just say, not only would we double the cost of the audit to do a GF, a GFOA audit, we'd also have to add a, an additional accounting member because we're not gonna pass the stringent rules for separations of duties and all the requirements to pass a GAAP audit. We can pass a RAP audit very easily, a regulatory audit, but a GAAP audit would be a little more demanding.
Because we follow the state of Arkansas guidelines.
We follow state of Arkansas guidelines.
Kim is very capable of doing a GAAP audit if you ever need one. It's not impossible. So, you know, if something ever comes along and you need that, it can happen.
Arkansas is unusual.
I took this job and didn't have to do it.
Well, I took the attitude that this way is less expensive and if it's good enough for the bondholders, it's.
That's right.
To me. All the creditors are happy when it comes. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we'll be voting on that next week. The second item I wanted to take up going out of order is a discussion item. We had a representative of Blue Crane LLC in their current runway group here making sure presentation. We have Brenda Anderson and Ethan Hunter.
I assume you want me in the same place, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, hi. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time this evening. The mayor asked us to attend this meeting really because, you know, the meeting that we had at the country club was in the middle of the workday and I know a lot of folks can't attend. And so we thought it'd be a good idea to come in this evening, introduce ourselves and just share with you what we shared at that meeting. So Ethan and I will be the primary folks actually at Runway working on our study and considerations for development in Bellevista over the next six to eighteen months. And, you know, the first six months, we're really just trying to wrap our heads around everything, right? All the different entities and organizations and how we can participate in a really productive way with everyone. And I think if you talk to the folks at the city of Bentonville, where we've done a lot of work, they'll tell you we're rural followers. We may often wanna do bigger things or things that haven't been done before. But we're generally, you know, work with cities and utilities to get the work done. And I'm sure they would share that with you. I don't really have anything else for you this evening, but I thought if you have any questions you've thought of since the meeting at the country club, or if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them for you. Yes, sir.
Do you have any plans for commercial development?
Yes, we do, but we don't have specific plans just yet. As you know, some of the property that we've acquired is already commercial in nature. It may not be developed to the fullest extent that it could be. It may be, you know, need suppressioning of some sort. I think, you know, the initial work that we'll do will be in those areas, not stepping out into new areas of the village.
Yes. How often will the site be updated with information?
Yeah, you know, they're probably, we put up what we call a landing page and that's really all it is. It gives folks a way to reach out to us and to make contact. Because we haven't always been as prompt as we'd like to be with responses. We're just working on an auto reply. Doesn't mean we aren't gonna look at them. So we don't wanna have expectations about how quickly we'll reply to those.
And as for, if you're, like the word says, you know, check here, info updates.
Yes, I have. Okay.
On a couple of the actual FAQs themselves that you're referring to.
Yes.
I don't know. Just answering the question. It's related to seeing if we have the information.
Absolutely.
Might not, it's not a great answer, but it's the honest answer. So it's just, as the information, you know, is, comes in and gets to the point where we, it's solid enough to share it, you know, we commit to it publicly. Yeah, well, they sound like a major coordinator.
And then also we weren't had it, because we were, that you would have a home base at the Artistry Tree Center. Is that correct or no? Or office space there, people would need to pop in or act in.
Oh, so we do have the Artistry Tree Center, the Line Barter Cabin there is in our portfolio. And we have done a little bit of officeing there, but I can't say we're keeping office hours there. We may create space there for consultants, design consultants that we use and have meetings there. I don't imagine that we'll be officeing there from like eight to five, five days a week, especially not in this year. As we move on to actually begin development work, it'll make a lot more sense for us to be based there instead of having to drive back and forth from Bentonville for meetings or site inspections or anything of that nature. Yes, sir.
Did your acquisition include the Old Sunset Hotel site?
Well, yes, sir. We do have that site. The mayor, of course, knows how to reach us via email and we're available anytime. If you happen to meet with any of you individually or have an email conversation, whatever is best for you. We're, we're there and we look forward to getting to know you all and to understand more about your city and how it functions.
Do we, do we have contact information for both of these?
I have Ethan.
We can, yeah. Would you? Would you like me to share it through you?
I'll send it out. I'll send it out.
Do you guys have anything to do with the cave?
Well, we own the property that the cave of a short.
Ten miles and what property have on it?
Yeah, yep, yep. And we've both been there in the last year. And we have some other folks who are taking a look at it. It's a really interesting resource and asset. You know, it's, as a cave, it's, it's not alive hardly, if you know what I mean. It's been changed and used in so many ways that you don't have active stalactites or stalagmites underway. And, you know, you also, it's, there are a lot of building codes around use of properties and spaces like that. And, you know, right now, there's one way in and one way out, which is a challenging thing. So we've had it mapped and we're doing a lot of study on how it could be used, how we might be able to enable access to it at some point in the future. But we have not figured all that out. So until we do, it'll probably just be, you know, sealed off and safe is kind of our first inclination there.
Well, the removal of the dam that Bentonville owns have any impact on your development plan?
Not really. I mean, we view Sugar Creek, again, as an asset, as perhaps an underutilized asset in our area. And we're in touch with David Wright, the director of the Parks and Rec Department for Bentonville. And, you know, wanna make sure that we understand their plans right now. They have a WCRC under contract to do an assessment and design for a stream restoration, repair in zone restoration, erosion control, all the way from Mercy Way south to the confluence with McKissit Creek. So they have a big contract for that work and they think it will take them the remainder of the year to finish that work. And then after they finish their work, David would be working with his consultants to develop the plan for cleanup and other restoration of the, of the stream.
You may not be able to answer this, but, and if you can't, that's fine. But do you all have arrangement or any sort of an agreement with the old Bellevista water system regarding that area up there where the hotel used to be for utility up in that area?
Yeah, we have not entered into an agreement, but we have met with their operator, Sally Ferris. Yes. And actually, she asked us to help her get a meeting with the city of Bentonville and the Department of Health to, because she's running into some issues with her customer base, just the size of her customer base and meeting standards and requirements. And the state has said to the city of Bentonville, maybe you should basically adopt this system. City of Bentonville's going, well, wait a minute, you know, let us talk about this. So there are some things going on and we have set up a meeting for in July where a rep from the state is coming up, or a meeting with city of Bentonville officials and with Sandy and, or not Sandy, Sally and whoever she chooses to bring to that meeting. We're not trying to get in the middle of it. We were just trying to facilitate a conversation because they have concerns about their ability to, you know, meet growing needs in that area. So I would say it's not figured out, but I think there's general awareness that the system may not be able to support, you know, a big growth in demand in that area. And trying to think through what that would look like. And it's, it's water, but it's also fire protection, right?
But it's a word that's getting written into our system.
I think they have a substantial connection to the city of Bentonville.
They do. They have a twelve-inch line that comes to a meter.
So it's not that they don't have an ability to obtain the volume of water they might need. It's a matter that their system may not be able to distribute it to the needed points.
Yeah, and to have the pressure you need, it should go up with the head.
Pressure, pressure should be there already with the Bentonville system. I'm not certain about that, but I'm guessing that it's probably there because that served on the tall that you brought down to Bentonville.
Gotcha.
The big one on the west side that you see standing up over everything, the service area.
Yeah, that's on twelve and Bentonville off twelve, yeah. So we're trying to learn all these things. We are aware that we need to study these things. We need to work with the local utility providers to find the best answers for issues that arise. But you're right, I don't know the answer today.
When will you be working on your plans to develop along the I forty-nine corridor?
Oh, that's probably out there a ways. Brenda may not be standing here when that, you know. It's, it's a ways out.
It's a ways out. So on your top of your.
It is not.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
We'll follow up with her.
Okay. Okay, now we'll continue with the regular schedule. First one is an ordinance vacating a public utility easement and for other purposes. Taylor, did you wanna say a couple of words about this?
Have you guys approved the resolution? I'm just reminded we'll have to have a public hearing on this next Monday before we actually talk about it. But essentially what it is, is an easement relocation is the best way to describe it. The planning commission has accepted the new easements. All that's happened is the property line has moved south and our code requires the easements follow that property line. So we've accepted new public utility easements and drainage easements as well as planting, screening easements. The planning commission's ready to sign it, conditioned upon that you guys approve this easement vacation. So these easements, if you guys approve this, will be vacated, but we are already locked and loaded, ready to go with the new easements for utility. So happy to take any questions.
That's the planning commission. I don't think the public had any commentary, did they?
No, the planning commission doesn't consider easement vacations. So they really just discussed accepting the new easements. This wasn't really a topic there, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two things I'd like to mention on this. First, so on your agenda, this is going to look a little different. In your new business, we'll have a public hearing on consideration of this ordinance, and that'll be first. And then we'll that's separate from your normal public comment period. This is not the same thing. It's a public hearing, so we'll conduct that, and then after that, then you'll move immediately the first reading on your proposed ordinance. But you'll see a little something different there on your agenda, and that's why that's going to be that way. And I'll, Wanda, I'll make sure that we're squared away on how that's going to work. Number two, and I talked to Taylor about this, and I'll go ahead and say, I don't know if anyone's going to notice it or not, but I'm going to mention it. So you have to make a finding in this ordinance that this easement or this, and it's the same for right away, but this easement has not been used by the city for five years prior, for the previous five years, basically. We've had this easement for about four months, but it can be truthfully said that we have not used this easement as a public utility easement in the prior five years. So it's written oddly, and you might say, wait a minute, we just got this and hasn't. But with that reading of it, I think you can't, you obviously do know we have not used it for five years. And so even though we've not had it for five years, we obviously have not used it for five years. So I just want to bring that up to you. You'll see that in your ordinance, and that's the rationale for that.
When were those easements created?
Through the Gordon Hall subdivision that we accepted, I believe, in January.
So that's when this needed to be vacated, then?
No, these easements were created via the Gordon Hall subdivision that you guys accepted via ordinance in January of this year, 2024. And so now they're wanting to move the property line south a little bit, so now they're being requested to be vacated.
So the area, if I'm looking at the map for that Lot One, the area being vacated is south of the new property line. So they're actually making the lot bigger for Lot One, based on the picture that I'm looking at.
The easements, the only easements that we're considering are the public ones, which will be the ones inside Lot One and Two. The easements that are south of Lot One were accepted in 2017 and are privately reserved. We're not looking at those. Those will be vacated via separate private document. We're only looking at the interior easements of Lot One and Two. Those are just being moved south with the property line via property line adjustment accepted conditionally by the Planning Commission.
Because I'm confused, Taylor, because the picture that I'm looking at shows the new lot line for number one to be moved northerly of the current easement line that's being vacated along the original property line, unless I'm looking at something incorrectly.
Are you looking at the exhibit?
No, the one that's passed out, yeah.
Okay.
So this was the old block line, and they moved, realigned it and created a new one.
Correct. And then this one is moving south.
Yes.
Yes.
It's going from here down to here, so.
So the Planning Commission has already accepted these.
The plant.
Yep, via the property line adjustment. Planning Commission has already accepted these. These will be vacated via private. These are the only ones in grade that we have.
And they're public easements.
Authority over, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so all that will be on the agenda for next week. Next one's a resolution. You have another question?
What kind of question? Do we want to do a third and final reading for the ordinance?
I put it in my staff memo, so I probably will request a third file at the regular meeting.
Okay. Good question. Next one's a resolution amending the 2024 city budget in a total amount of $95,000 and approving the addition of one full-time planning staff and one full-time civil engineering intern staff for the Community Development Services Department. Taylor, do you want to talk about the full-time planning staff?
Yes. So essentially, staff is or planning staff is requesting a full-time planning staff member, really focusing on experience with this. Traditionally, we've requested new positions that are new. However, this time around, with the amount of development, the amount of development we're going to be, I guess, anticipating how busy we already are, kind of going the non-traditional route and requesting someone with experience. So that way, there's no training, there's already someone that has typically or preferred four years of professional planning experience, so not like administrative or anything like that, actual practicing experience that can get in here and kind of pick up and go and kind of help where we are. That's really the main gist of my request for the planning staff is just really focusing in on someone that's experienced that can get in and start helping us. And outside experience is always great, too, other cities and whatnot. So that's really all that I have on that. Just really needed some help with someone who's got at least four years of experience of professional planning to kind of help where we're at right now. We've got a lot going on. We've got a lot of projects that need housekeeping, a lot of projects that need updated. The comprehensive plan is turning five years old next year, so it's about time that we start updating that and make sure that it's everything's up to date. Our maps, fill up our map projects, never get caught up, but we are working on getting those, all of those updated with our GIS technician that we have on staff. And then with the development code reform, current planning and long-range planning are kind of both just two plates that are getting really full. So here tonight to ask you guys for some experienced help.
So are the.
Go ahead, Jared.
You you mentioned additional development work that you're anticipating. What do you mean?
Typically, whenever we get due diligence, that's what we call requests of something like someone will call and say, I'm looking at this property. Can you tell me what it's zoned for? What are all the uses that are allowed in your use table? What conditional use permits will be required, things like that? We're getting an uptick of those. We're getting a lot of due diligence calls, and typically when that happens, normally things like rezones, planning, things that we have to review and use staff time on heavily follow. So that's what I mean by that.
Larry?
So for the engineering technician that you're looking, or engineering intern?
We haven't got there yet.
Yeah, it's we have a different speaker on that. So we're just talking about the planning now.
Did I miss that?
No, just two jobs in one that one wrapped up.
Full-time planning staff and civil engineering intern. You have to talk about the intern.
That's going to be next.
Doug Tapp was going to talk about the interns. We'll go ahead with that.
You ready?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. Council, as the city continues to grow, I just want to share a couple of stats with you that involve our city engineer and Community Development Services permit desk. In 2023, the city issued 613 grading and erosion control permits, and we have seen an increase in those submissions. And so in 2024, just through this past weekend, our city engineer, Chris, has issued 397. So year-to-date, in 2023, that number was 232. Year-to-date, this year is 397. So he's in, you know, he's he's issued a lot more permits, but we're still seeing a slower turn time than we would like in the department. And so, Mayor, if you'll recall, when we asked council for that position, we wanted a full-time engineer, and we weren't successful. So we found a great part-time city engineer. And so Chris is overwhelmed with the number of permits and reviews that are coming in. He's also doing driveway grade calculations, retaining wall reviews, drainage contours and calculations. And so after discussions with HR and the mayor and Chris, we feel like someone right out of school that has their degree in engineering could considerably help us because Taylor's planning staff is helping with inspections out in the field for grading and erosion control permits, but Chris is doing the review in-house. So if he were out in the field having to do all those, we feel like our turn times would even be slower. So we want to get those down to less than a week. Right now, we're at many weeks. And so we're asking for help as the city continues to grow and some assistance for Chris so that we can better serve the public. Yes, sir.
Jerry.
A key area in contractors, it takes as much as six months to get a building permit. Is that correct?
No, sir. Our residential reviews, just a couple of numbers on those, and then I'll answer your question, Jerry. In 2023, we issued 542 residential home permits. This year, to date, as of last weekend, we've issued 332. So we're on track to do 100-ish more this year. Dylan, our plan reviewer, his turn times are less than a week on those, so you can submit a full package if everything's there and get a review and get that permit. Our review times on grading permits, which is what they get before, you know, they build the home to clear the lot, is several weeks. And so we want to get that number down, but it's not six months. It's several weeks.
You know, what people give approximate, a lot of different things happens. I'm told it takes two months to go through ADH and get your septic. You have to do that before you do the other stuff. And we are getting slow with the GECs. Chris has been doing a fantastic job, and it was a great find. I think I've been super happy with him, but he is definitely swamped. I mean, it's been amazing with the high interest rates, how we still have all this demand.
So you have someone lined up for this?
No, sir. If you if you approve this, we will advertise immediately and try to find somebody.
So when you say civil engineering intern, Mr. Tapp, you're talking about someone that's a degreed engineer in civil engineering, probably with a focus in municipal-type engineering?
Or civil, civil.
Civil engineering.
But not a PE.
But not a PE, and he would be working under Chris, then?
Yes, sir.
So he would be able to gain his experience.
Correct.
Under his licensed engineer.
Correct.
Work out good. Okay, sounds like your plan, Lee.
Chris, did I miss anything? Anything you want to add?
I'd just be helpful, I have someone that was full-time that could answer the phone because I get inundated with messages, and it's hard to, when I'm going through 30 emails and 15 voicemails, it's hard to review any GECs. So it's just, it'd be good to have someone that could actually try to, and he wouldn't be able to answer everything, but he could answer some of the stuff I do. And what he can't answer, then I'll get back with those people. But I mean, and the more experienced he gets, he'll be able to do more.
Okay, so, and that number we're quoting there, that's for half a year. So, you know, these are going to be ongoing positions, full disclosure. But we do quote a little high because, you know, if you think, oh, you're going to pay $X thousand, then you find somebody who's great, is $3,000 more than that. You don't want to not have the, you know, the permission from council to go ahead, right? So anyway.
Depending upon supply and demand for that particular position, there may be more demand than supply, so the price is going to be more. So it's a it's a guess, guessing game when you go out.
Yeah, it's still a challenging field to find people, I would say. So, okay, we'll move on. The next one's a resolution expressing the official intent regarding certain capital improvements. Jason, did you want to talk about this, or should I keep doing?
I think Kim needs to talk about this.
Okay, Kim, you want to?
Sorry, I got to ditch my key up there. So what we're doing is, as you know, that we have the big remodel at City Hall in the station number one. So what this is, is a resolution that starts the clock ticking so we can start gathering how much money we spent. So until this resolution, we can, if we pass it on the 27th, we can go back two months and look at the expenses, you know, leading up to the to June, so from April to June. But we can't go back any further. So what this does is it just allows the clock to start ticking on when we can start gathering the expense information. We don't know exactly when and for how much we're going to go to market for to reimburse ourselves for the building. We don't have that number yet. That's in the planning stage. But in case we wanted to do more, oh, well, not more, but in order to get a number, we have to start the clock, and that's what we're doing here. Does that make sense? Does everybody?
Yeah, I was, I'll tell you, I was concerned the building process is going along, and we're starting to crank some decent numbers. So if you don't pass this, you know, if we want to get Amendment 78 or a bond, this just means you could include those expenses in it if you want to. You don't have to.
Right, we don't have to do that. This doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say we have to start gathering those expenses. We'll have to evaluate our needs and look at what we want, what we can afford and what we want to use of our own money, et cetera, you know, for the next month or two, to make that decision. But if we got to November or December, then the clock would start, you know, at that time. So that's why we were trying to get this going early.
So this is a state rule that limits us to two months behind?
Exactly.
Two, two months?
Two months. So from the day we pass this, we can go backwards.
Go backward two months.
Two months to.
For expenditure to.
To reimburse ourselves. To reimburse.
If we like, so, but we know we're going to be looking at some financing, and we just thought it'd be smart to pass this, and then we'll come to you in the next few months with whatever that would be.
Third and final? This is.
Well, it's a resolution, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, D is accepting the financial. I think we talked about that, and that'll be up for a vote next week. E is granting the appeal followed by happy egg regarding large scale development, LSD Taylor, did you want to explain this?
Yes, just to kind of open up, we do have the applicant and the property owner here that have some items for you as well, prepared for tonight. You have the letter of the appeal that Wanda, our city court, received, as well as the packet that they sent in. Just to be transparent, the packet that they sent with their appeal letter is slightly different than what the Planning Commission denied. The Planning Commission denied a waiver of the pedestrian accommodations requirement, and then after that, it did not meet code, and there were some outstanding utility comments, and so the Planning Commission denied the large scale that was second to vote after that. I will note, just like from personal observations and talking with the commission, I think there was some confusion on the floor as to what they were voting on during the large-scale vote. A recommendation was made to approve with staff conditions, and so long as they added the pedestrian accommodations since the waiver was denied. And then after that, it did receive all no's, but they are to do that, but it didn't meet code, so they very much have the authority to deny it. So the applicant's here tonight seeking just an appeal of the large scale. However, to my knowledge, they can only appeal the Planning Commission's decision. Correct? Jason?
We can, what else?
So the the plan that they submitted with the appeal letter is slightly different.
No, they can appeal what was denied, but they can't make a new application directly with the council.
A new civil set?
Right.
Okay.
So my understanding was, and correct me if I'm wrong, I did hear from one of the, when the meeting was over, one of the planning commissioners walked in and said he was confused.
Correct.
And he thought another member was confused.
Correct.
So I'll just add that for what it's worth. But my understanding was that they were going to appeal the large scale, they were not going to seek a waiver of the pedestrian requirements, they were just going to meet those requirements and bring through the large, the large scale. Is that?
That's what they sent, that's what they sent city council, so that's the difference with the civil set. The civil set is actually more compliant than what the Planning Commission denied.
Oh, well, that's that's understandable. That's they, they're just not seeking a waiver.
Correct.
So they have to show a plan that meets.
And they've done that.
Okay.
They're still working with Carol to meet their comments. The water utility or center tank utility provided a conditional approval, which you guys have in your packet, and then as of this morning or late Friday, Carol sent an update, so they're working with them quite closely to get their comments met as well. And then the applicant is here to add on to what I have with a lot more detail, if you would like for them to come up.
I thought, well, let me, let me say something.
Okay.
One is, as of the work session, there's no record of this meeting. And they may have information, that's good. But they need to bring it to the regular meeting so that there are minutes and it can be on the record. Okay? And the other thing I was gonna say is just slipped my mind. If it wasn't that good, or I would have remembered it. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. But, oh, and it is. If they are compliant, so if the staff looks at this and they are compliant without the waiver, then we have to approve it. You, you can't, you don't really have any, any ability to lawfully turn that down if they admit our minimum requirement. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So the, as I understand the appeal, it's regarding the.
The large-scale development.
Large-scale development standards for a pedestrian way or a sidewalk or something like that?
No, they did not. They didn't come forward with that. They ended up just complying.
Okay.
So the planning commission denied their waiver request of pedestrian accommodations. And they have complied and added them into the civil set for you tonight. It's in the civil set in your packet.
I think it would be good to hear from them. I would like to say a couple of things before we do. I was at the planning commission meeting. And first they had a waiver of the sidewalk. And the vote was three yes, two no, and one abstaining. Daniel Ellis was abstaining because Craft and Toll was involved. And so it didn't pass. It needed, and one person was acting, needed four. So they had forgotten how about the side. They said five votes in the sidewalk. And they appealed the other part. The other part was zero yes, five no. There was no discussion, no reasons given. It was somewhat inexplicable. Somebody came up to me after the meeting and said at least two people didn't understand it. And I drove one other person home and she didn't seem to have a strong opinion about it. So, and Daniel, there was, Daniel didn't, not only did he not vote because he was, he didn't talk about it and, and he was abstaining in every way. And it just was much more disjointed than anything I'd observed there. And, and didn't appear, didn't appear to me to be correct. Anyway, so is it, I think it'd be good to hear from somebody from Happy Egg.
I, I need them to understand. Do you understand what I said?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
Yeah, you should come back, say the same thing.
Yeah, we may repeat ourselves.
Yes.
Sometimes two coats of paint are better than one.
Counsel, we stand for getting clarity on the part of the council. Maybe.
No.
All right. Hey, good evening, good afternoon, whatever you call this. My name is Alex Worley and I'm the, the proud CEO of Happy Egg. If you don't know, we're the number one free range brand in the nation. Headquartered right here in your neighboring backyard Rogers. Our company's woven into the fabric of this community. We have 50 onsite, full-time employees in Northwest Arkansas, minor Northwest Arkansas office. And our leadership team all grew up in the Ozarks. We are proud of that. Where we partner with over 100 small family farms that exclusively produce our eggs. And that's in this state and the region. Our farmers are a testament to the values that we hold as individuals in our collective organization. We saw an opportunity to bring farmers' market quality heritage eggs to consumers to scale while raising the standard we mainly raise for your egg hens. Approval of this state-of-the-art research site, which is one of, literally one of a kind, will preserve years of research and lineage of our exclusive heritage, heritage Old World breed. It will also advance our commitment to sustainable farm practices and bring tangible benefits to our community such as offering employment for our scientists on the farm, technicians on the farm, support staff, who directly support 70 farms throughout the state of Arkansas, which we're really proud of. And by the way, that 70 is growing. So if I see you a year from now, that number will be bigger. And if you would ever like to come see a Happy Egg commercial laying hen farm, there's nothing more that I'm proud to do than take you to one of those. Unlike a traditional boiler barn, okay, this is important to bring clarity and we can have questions here. This is not a house that will have 30,000 to 40,000 hens in a horizontal tunnel. This facility will have somewhere between the nature of 2,000 and 5,000 birds. It will have positive pressure. That's a little technical there, but that's an important investment we've made just from a climate standpoint. It'll have chimney stacked ventilation, so the ventilation will go up. It will not go out. So it eliminates the impact to the surrounding community. There's two reasons why you do that. Number one is the safety and the health of the birds. From a genetic standpoint, they're worth a lot to us. Last, this research facility will be a sterile, highly biosecure research environment. And it will not be a farm that has birds scattered all over the place. This, this, this facility will not produce table-grade food for consumption. Its sole purpose is state-of-the-art egg research and therefore further genetic improvement that supports our farms. As a member of your community and a proud leader of our team at Happy Egg, I will ask that you vote to allow this production of this one-of-a-kind research facility that I hope, like me, you'll be proud of, not only to have in, in the area, but to have in our state. And by allowing this expansion of our operations together, we can benefit our community and foster economic growth for the years to come. I really appreciate your time and your consideration. And obviously, I'll answer any of your all questions as well as Craft and Toll here.
My name is Ally Carr. I represent the developer with Craft and Toll. And Taylor did a wonderful job kind of recapping the meeting as the mayor. And so just to kind of highlight that again and reiterate, so we presented this large scale for these two, two barns. We meet planning, engineering, RDOT, Centerton Water, and Carol Electric comments to this point. They're working on acquiring easements. And that's all in Carol's hands. So all comments have been addressed. We're meeting all your ordinances now with placing the sidewalk there. And this use is allowed by right. And so I think that's kind of all we have to add. We'll, we'll be here for any questions and then see you again on Monday.
Yes, sir.
Chicken liver is a big issue in Northwest Arkansas.
I need, hang on. I, I wanna, I wanna, before we go down the road, it's gonna get us in trouble. It is not the worthiness of development. I know you're smiling. I know you're trying to ask something you know you don't need to. Don't, it's, it's a technical consider, this is a technical consideration is what we're talking about. And, and so I, they, obviously, they think their project's worthy. And I'm not saying it's unworthy, don't get me wrong. But worthiness and how great it is are not on the agenda.
So, so this will not be a production farm, but rather a research operation?
Yeah, it'll have, it'll have 2,000 to 5,000 birds inside, inside the facility with, I would say, state-of-the-art. It's literally one-of-a-kind infrastructure that we're having built in Europe. Obviously, there's gonna be chickens inside of that building. We can get super technical here if that helps you on what we think that will look like and our plans for that. But that's, when you talk about chicken liver and things of that nature, what you're referring to is very large-scale operations that produce a large-scale amount of that. I mean, this is not even close to that.
Okay. So.
So that's not, not even an issue to be worried about?
I, I, I would even say, yeah, it's, it's not even close to a, even what you'd call a standard Arkansas chicken farm. This is not even close to something like that.
Craig?
That's the only question I had was as far as trucks. Are you guys gonna be running big trucks or, I mean, do you get? The only reason I'm asking, I know that.
Yeah, sure.
Buy that every single day. So I don't know the path that you guys, if y'all have established the path that leads you to the highway quickly or if you're gonna go the whole jog down. I don't know what, what access to highway with those sized trucks that, that, that site provides.
Yeah, I think it's a great question. I don't know if anyone from Happy Egg can give any further insight. I have my, my thoughts on that. But we have our full team here for you to bring up any technical, on just trucks. JT, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Absolutely, the caliber of the truck that you would see on a traditional full-free inversion site, this is much more to a smaller footprint. I would say 10 to 12 tons of meat all at once, a small volume. So it's really not the same, same as what you're recording.
The reason I'm asking, and I'm sure you know the topography of that road by now, but people fly, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Like had an innovative, are, are we gonna have signs posted, like trucks turning and, and stuff like that? Or would we consider that at this point or?
We'd absolutely consider it, for sure. Okay. Whatever you guys think is, you know, a requirement for safety on that.
Well, and that kind of, it just goes hand in hand because I don't know, do you guys run your trucks typically AM or?
This will be slightly different to what I'm used to on the live production side of things. That's usually as you can when you order your feed. But this will be different, so I can't really necessarily answer that.
Yeah, and like, like you said, that, that would be the one concern is somebody, you know, coming either, you know, up under the overpass. Because I know it's kind of.
Yeah, I'm saying, that's right, yeah. And one other clarifying thing, too, there are two different barns on the same site. One barn is there to feed the other. So the, most of the time, one of those facilities will actually be empty. You may ask why we do that, and that's purely from a biosecurity standpoint. So it's such an important site for us from a genetic standpoint. And that is because it supports so many growers, so many farmers later down the line. And so primarily what you're looking at here is, you know, there's one barn that's primarily in operation at most of the time. So that's also to consider, also going back to your chicken liver, there's not two barns in operation full-time. Transparently, there will be times where both barns are actually not operational just depending on timing of those things, sequence vary specifically.
And that, that was the only reason.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, it's a really good point.
If you guys could bring some kind of planned egress, I would only request that, you know, egress out.
Yeah.
Would be further from the highway, if that makes, I don't know the directions. But it, it kind of planes out at that point, you know, to where you could actually see what's in front of you. Because people go down that road 100 miles an hour, especially when they start going up. It's, it gets really fast.
Taylor?
Just to add to, with large scales, we cannot add conditions on these. They can only do what code requires. And so since they've already met code with like, with what they have tonight, so like we can't require additional things and that's RDOT's kind of easement. So it's, it's a collector road. They've met our collector standards. So anything above and beyond that would not be allowed since, well, one is not even a city limit. So we can't put like conditional uses or zoning variance requirements.
I'm just offering suggestions. I mean, like considerations, that's, that's all I'm.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We appreciate that.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Yeah, this is, I believe this is in the planning area.
Correct, this is on city.
Is there a existing facility for, facility for housing birds? Or will there be some type of an office or a research type facility inside there?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so both ends. So this bird, this will have both a, a research facility inside. And then there'll be someone there that that is their permanent, I mean, basically their job nine to five or eight to five, whatever. They'll have an office there and then there'll be a lab, essentially a lab setting where we will be doing testing on the eggs themselves, from fertility testing to a whole bunch of other things that will bore you and all nerd out over. But that'll all happen on the same site there.
Okay, good work, Seth. Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. See you guys next week.
Next one is Resolution F, which is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three-year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC and a amount not to exceed $28,584 for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment. John, vocal?
Yes, this is a routine item that we've had on the council agenda every year for a number of years. Our standard with office computers has been three years preferred and five year maximum. So we have computers that are three and five years old that we need to get rid of. So this lease would basically be a replacement for those units. And it is a budgeted item, so.
Do we not just do it?
Yeah, that was for a server bundle and capital project, that was a different project.
How many computers are on this?
I believe it's 25.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everything. So we'll adjourn to next week. We'll be at 6:00 PM. Thank you.